Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Please rise for a moment of silence. About the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Harmoni?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Tata?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Cervoni?
Here.
Uh, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through G.
So moved, or seconded.
Moved and seconded. Did any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is passed. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. We have the public question and answer period. And there... Oh, Mr. Sullivan.
John Sullivan, 62 Dutton Street, right here in Wallingford. Well, um, got a couple things I want to say briefly. Um, first, I want to recognize and thank my colleague and friend, uh, Jason Zandry, for his years of service and his commitment to the town of Wallingford as a town councillor. Jason, you have been a champion for the citizens of this town and a voice of reason for the past 14 years. When the town's fireworks were removed from the budget, you led a committed group of volunteers that solicited public donations to ensure our town's fireworks display never missed a beat. It's truly a shame that such a courageous and determined leader will no longer hold a position on the town council. I made it a point to attend this evening specifically to thank you for your service and hope you will continue to seek opportunities to make Wallingford a better place to live for all of us. I think you still have much to give. Thank you. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is to the mayor. Pay attention now. I want to thank you for your 40 years of steadfast leadership to this town. You leave our town with a number of accomplishments over the years. In my mind, two of your biggest, biggest accomplishments are the open space properties that you promoted on both sides of town and ensuring our town was and remains fiscally and financially in great shape. While I know there are many challenges over the years, I think you handled them very well and always put the town's interests first and foremost. I thank you for your friendship over the years, most especially your corny jokes. But I've always enjoyed our many conversations, and I found over time you really have a wonderful sense of humor. Again, my thanks for a job well done. You've made Wallingford an outstanding place to live, work, and raise children in. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no takers, uh, on to item six. Can I please get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the bequest from the estate of Patricia El Franco in the amount of $178,270.80 as a donation to the Wallingford Animal Control.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Um, so the executor of Patricia Franco's estate, Tina Franco, is here, um, and I want to acknowledge you and thank you for following through with what the, uh, the will directed you to do and, uh, you know, and on behalf of the decedent Patricia, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, you're welcome to. Uh, if you don't want to, we're not going to demand that you do. Okay, well, thank you very much for the gift. Um, questions or comments from the council? All right, questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, council has accepted the gift. And, uh, I guess we'll deal in the coming term with how we can appropriate it for the use of the animal control facility. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to item seven, which is the Fire Union Local 1326 IAFF three-year extension from July 1, 23 to June 30, 26. Mr. Hutt, if you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, uh, good evening, Jim Hutt, Town HR Director. I'm here tonight seeking the council's approval for a three-year extension on the fire pension contract to run from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2026. The changes, there's no substantive changes to the pension benefits. There are changes for, uh, general language, uh, changes in, uh, contract language that was provided by the town's pension attorney. So with that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Sure. Questions from the council, Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jim, do you have an opportunity to, um, fix anything in this document or is it baked?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last word.
Baked, done. Because what I just want to bring to your attention is the table of contents does not match the document. In fact, when it was done last time, it didn't, so...
So this will be changed. Once the language gets inserted and language gets deleted, then I'll revise the table of contents.
Great. With that, I have nothing else. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No other hands on the council, any questions or comments from the public? Um, Mr. Hutt, uh, is this the type of agreement that will take effect without our action or do you need our ratification of it?
Well, I'll always seek the approval. I'll ask for your vote, but if not, then, uh, this will become effective January 12, 2024, so you do not have to take any action on it.
Okay. Um, I leave it to the council to make a motion or, uh, it would be approved, uh, by fiat on January 12?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract.
Moved, uh, seconded by Councilor Fishbein. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Tata?
I'm just curious why we're approving this one we typically don't approve. Is this one different? Is there a different?
No.
No, but it is, it's an extension of the existing contract.
So I have an obligation to come to you to seek the approval of the board, and so when the question was asked, I'm always going to say, I recommend approval, you know, hopefully tonight, but if not, then you have that 44-day window following the signing of the TA, which would be January 12, 2024, if you take no action tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't know why we need to wait 44 days if we all approve of this contract.
Uh, Councilor Fishbein?
The distinction that I make here is it's not a, it's not a contract, it's a pension agreement, a pension that presently exists. It's, um, really no shift in money. It's a cleanup in language, so, I, I take a different position than if we were dealing with a wage increase that is, you know, sometimes problematic and, and all that stuff. So that was the reason for my seconding. I, I appreciate that, you know, we need to have these things for our firefighters and, you know, police and that kind of stuff so that people want to do these jobs. And, you know, we're not shifting, we're not shifting money, so, um, that's the reason why I seconded and I support what's before us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the table of contents will get cleaned up more quickly. Um, if there's nothing else, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll, please?
Allenson?
Yes.
Harmoni?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes, unanimously passed by all present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutt. And item eight, uh, Councilor Tata, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this item is, um, discussion impossible action to use $46,028 of ARPA funds for the following expenditures. Um, and these are all for fire and EMS. Gear extractor and washer with base $9,300, a two-set gear dryer, $1,900, a UTV with commercial insert, $33,000, and an accelerant and hydrocarbon detector, $1,828. So, um, if everyone would recall back during, uh, budget season, these were items that the fire department had requested in their annual budget. Um, they were not approved by the administration, so they were removed from the budget. And, uh, when I saw that they were taken out of the budget, um, I questioned that, just like with any other department. If I see that items that were requested were not honored, I typically question that. And it, it turns out that we had ARPA money that we were using, um, during our budget, the budget proposal that the council voted on, and we had asked for those to be funded with ARPA in that. That passed the council, um, and they still remain unfunded. So this was going back to May. Um, it's come up a few times since. I think the council may have voted twice on this, but I'm not sure. But we definitely at least voted once, um, I believe twice, um, that we wanted to spend this $46,000 of ARPA money towards these items. Um, and they still were unfunded. So at the last meeting, we were discussing some ARPA items. Um, I brought it up again. I was hoping that it was just going to show up as being funded on our council agenda today, um, on the consent agenda. It did not appear there, and so, um, I guess my question to the administration at this point is why these items, um, still have not been funded with ARPA money?
I think there's, there's a long list of proposed expenditures that I, I think the council received that. I think it totaled something way over $20 million. Um, I think there's somewhere between $3 and $4 million that I expect will be left after our other expenditures from ARPA. I really think there needs to be a very concentrated effort to determine what are priorities and what that money will be used for rather than, um, piecemeal appropriations. There are some very big items, costly items on that list from the administration, and I, I really think that's, that's what, that's what must be done. Go through that and decide what money is remaining and how it should be spent. And this would take more of that money away without that, that total view of the limited amount and, and what are the priorities for everyone to spend.
So these items were before that, that list of requests from the department heads. This was part of the budget process. Um, and I'm looking at the ARPA expenditures so far. Um, well, the latest list we have looks like it was from 1024. But there's $4.5 million in municipal, um, transfers already, and many of those were, were from the mayor's budget. And so this $46,000 on top of the 4.5 million was, was what the council had requested. So this was before the list came. So that's why I'm doing this as different, because we voted at budget time that we wanted to spend it this way. And, and we do have municipal expenditures on here already, just not these. I mean, I, I guess, I don't know, it's just, it's another example of the council, you know, we, we all voted for this. We voted for this during our budget, during budget time. We said we wanted this, um, and it hasn't been honored and it's going back to May now. I don't think this is something that we weigh down. I don't think this is one of the items that we need to see if we have leftover money. I think this is a priority. And it's, it's $46,000. It's not, I mean, we gave, we're giving out ARPA money like candy to, to places that barely serve Wallingford residents. Um, this is something for our firefighters, a tool to do their job, and I, it's a COVID expenditure, um, that was what ARPA was for, and what they went through during COVID, was beyond anything that, that many people in this town had to, had to deal with. And I'm sure I don't even know a lot of it, but I, I've heard some of the stories and, um, you know, in those early days of COVID and, and they were, we were requiring them through their job, through their employment with us to deal with COVID-positive people. Um, this was before anybody knew what was going on, you know, before vaccines, before any, any of that. You know, going home and, and having to undress in their yards and hose off because they're not sure what they were bringing home to their, their babies. Um, I mean, they went through a lot for us, you know, and, and to, to argue over $46,000 when they've asked for a tool to do their job, it's just, it's, it's appalling to me. It's almost embarrassing that, that, that we're even still discussing this. I don't really have much more I can do now to, to ask for this $46,000 again. Um, except for that, I guess with the next administration, I'm going to put down another agenda and I'm, I'm hoping that we can finally get this for them. Um, these are tools to do their jobs. They're not, they're not nice to haves. They're necessities, and, and we, we haven't given that to them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilor Allenson?
Um, on the UTV, I, um, I know the police got one. I wasn't sure if there was any kind of ability to cross-use those in emergency situations or if they're equipped with different, um, tool, different kitting. I assume they are. Um, do you know?
Any equipment in one department is always available for use by another department if it's something they need. So it's, there's good working relationship.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I assume that, but I'm just wondering, you know, can a UTV that's outfitted, that isn't outfitted for, like, rescue specifically be used in those situations? So I see some people shaking their heads. I assume you're the professionals, so we'll, we'll go with that. Um, and then I, I do just want to, like, to stress the, um, washer with base dryer, um, and accelerant and hydrocarbon detectors. Um, I do think that regardless of how anybody views, a UTV, which I agree with the purchase, um, but I do think that there is a more urgent need on those. I understand that there is, uh, one volunteer department that's going across town to use the other volunteer departments. Um, washer and dryer that is, uh, at a huge inconvenience to them, and it's not just inconvenient, it's dangerous, because if somebody doesn't have time or doesn't, can't get there, uh, timely, they may be re-wearing gear that they've now exposed to, you know, dangerous, um, chemicals or pollutants. And I, I would just like to see that. I mean, obviously, I don't expect you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, do this in, in your last month kind of in office, and I definitely recognize that. Um, but I, I do hope that in the future we are able to, um, I, I do hope that we're able to fund these, fund these items, um, especially those that are, uh, in my opinion, um, you know, more life or death. And I, I realize that nobody's, you know, on the edge of death without them, but I do think that it is a huge, uh, undertaking to ask people to do very dangerous positions, um, especially volunteer, um, and especially in the public sector as well. Um, so if we can do anything to assist them in those needs, I would definitely agree that it's, uh, it would behoove us to do so. So that's really all I had to say. It wasn't really a statement so much to administration or anything like that, but hopefully, you know, if the new mayor is in the room, um, we'll get to talk to him about it in January.
Councilor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I fully support this. This is a no-brainer. It's 1% of, of the total amount that was discussed earlier, 4.5 million. This is like 1% of that. Um, the year prior, we, we surplus $896,000. Our general fund balance has been oscillating, uh, it's been basically $27 million for eight years. It's gone up, it's gone down. Eight years ago, it was 27.5. A year ago, it was 27.7. The budget's moved $30 million in that period of time. So this is an absolute no-brainer, and I think we should just go ahead and do it. And I, like Councilor Tata said, it should have just been on the consent agenda, and we should have just pushed it through. Thank you.
Councilor Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just in regards to the UTV, because I think, um, you know, that, that's the one that has kind of, we've kind of been talking about for several years now, and I just want to give a couple examples. So, um, we have a lot of open space in town. We were just, you know, one, a member of the public was just speaking about that before. Um, if something happens in those areas where it's difficult to get an apparatus, that's where that will come into play. So for example, um, something happens on the linear trail, um, it's, you know, will they get there without that? Yes. But are they running, you know, a mile or two miles with 70 pounds of gear? Yes. So to ask our, our employees to do that, um, I think is, is asking a lot when we don't, we don't need to require them to do that. Um, and that, you know, the linear trail is kind of best-case scenario. There's obviously other areas, um, that are not paved, um, that will be much more difficult to get to. Um, and in those situations, when, when seconds and minutes matter, um, that could, you know, that could be a matter of life and death, uh, whether we have that or not. And so, um, it's, it's not so much a matter of convenience. I think it's a matter of, you know, keeping our employees safe, um, but also, you know, potentially saving lives if we're in an area that we can't get to, um, with the other apparatus. So, um, just wanted to clear that up. And I, and I also do believe that is especially outfitted for, um, fire and rescue, um, different than, than what the police department has. Thank you.
Councilor Laffin?
Yeah, just, um, I think we've, we've all supported this. And, and the other times it's come up, I, I just, I believe there's not a mechanism from our branch of government to, to take any additional steps. But, um, just so that the firefighters and the people at home know, it's, it is something that's supported and I think will be figured out in the coming weeks and months. But I think it's, um, I think it's obviously valuable, and I want to thank the, the teams that are here and that have, that have proposed this. Thanks.
See no other hands on the council, any questions or comments from the public? I'm, I'm sorry. First of all, you need to approach, come to the microphone if you could please identify yourself.
My name's Robert Stewards. I am located on 135 Church Street in Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm asking you.
Who's, who's you?
Do you, you, Vincent Saroni, do you have any criminal convictions in Chicago?
I have no criminal convictions anywhere. Well, that was fun for my last meeting.
Or a preview?
Yeah. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
There's no motion.
Allenson?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's no motion.
Oh.
Okay, well...
I was about to say yes.
Councilor Fishbein?
Yeah, I just, you know, I hadn't said anything and I'm not gonna, but I think it's really sad that we're sitting here tonight. It's the mayor's last meeting as the mayor. And the items that are before us were asked for by the fire department to try and help save lives. And, you know, part of the argument was, well, the administration, which is the mayor, put in a lot of requests against ARPA. But, you know, we looked at that list, some of those items are inflated, and we're talking about a minuscule expense here. One of these items is a two-set gear dryer for $1,900. I remember there was a item on a council agenda many, many years ago. I think it was so small that the members of the council all pledged to pay for it themselves. I mean, this is really nothing, and I just think it's really sad that we're, we're all in support of this, the administration is not, and the fire department potentially is not going to be able to do their job. I just, you know, it's unfortunate, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, uh, if there is no motion on the, the table, then that ends the discussion on this item. So, uh, we're at the end of the agenda, and I guess I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna exercise some privilege and, um, address some people who are not going to be, uh, sitting here in the coming term. Um, so I do want to start by saying to Councilor Zandry that, uh, I've served with you most of my tenure on the council. You have been a strong local advocate for things in which you believe, and I do think that you believe that, uh, you have sought to advance the interests of the people of the town of Wallingford in the best way that you could, every opportunity that you had. You've certainly been a dedicated servant. And, uh, I want to thank you for your time on the council. Um, moving along, um, Mayor Dickinson, I have a message to you from a council. Moving along, Mayor Dickinson, I have a message to you from a counselor who could not attend this meeting. And he says, "If you were to list some of the names in Wallingford history that had the most impact on the development of our town, we would all agree on Doolittle, Cook, Street, Wallace, and now Dickinson. Forty years of public service is an incredible accomplishment. Further, the fact that you sought no further political office but remained steadfast in your commitment to Wallingford is a testament to our love, your love of our town. Even in times when I disagreed with your strategy, I know you always approach problems with a very fatherly devotion to this town. Most of all, I appreciate your quirky sense of humor, your ability to be silly at the appropriate times, and your reliable and kind manner. You will be missed and I wish you the absolute best as you return to being a private citizen. We all you, we all owe you a great debt from Joe Marone." And I guess with that, I'll open up the floor to other counselors if they have any words. Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, to Counselor Zandry. When I was first on the council and I, I asked you to discuss the budget, you didn't hesitate to talk to me. You know, party line didn't matter at all and you were always very willing to do that. And I really appreciated that, being a new counselor. I'm certainly going to miss your Excel spreadsheets and crunching numbers with you. You know, one of, one of the worst times I had up here was a couple of years ago. I texted you for something and you didn't answer for a few days, which was odd because you normally answer pretty quickly. And I asked another counselor if everything was okay. And he said, no, that you, you weren't doing well and you were in a coma. And you, you realize like that, times like that, that we're, we're more than just a, you know, a bunch of politicians up here debating with each other every few weeks. You know, we become friends. And so while, while you say you aren't going to be involved in politics again, I know you have that fire in you and I, I think we're going to see you again. And I, and I hope we, we see you back very soon. As for Mr. Mayor, two years before I was born, Mayor Dickinson attended his first town council meeting as mayor. And it's certainly going to be different at our next meeting to, to look to my right and not see you sitting there. And while we've not always agreed on every issue, I always respected that you never took that personally. We've always been able to laugh together outside of meetings and to have pleasant conversations and I truly appreciate you for that. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that you have always put Wallingford first. Everything you do is truly what you think is best for the town. So thank you for 40 years of devotion to our town. And I wish you all the best, good health and happiness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Allinson.
I was arguing about this with him on the mic earlier, or off the mic earlier, going, wait, I want to say something too. So.
And here you are.
And here I am. You're welcome. So to Counselors Zandry, there are so many things I could say to you. But, you know, in the spirit of brevity, which is something I'm never at all brief, I want to say thank you very much for tolerating my antics sitting next to me, for answering my questions the many, many times I've had them, for being an amazing friend and for still being around after this because you know we're going to hang out. So this is just a change. I don't like the change personally. I mean, it's nothing against anybody, you know. But, you know, I, I really have grown to love you and I really think that you've done amazing things for this town in your tenure. Nobody has tracked data, data like you have. And you have such a great demeanor and way of backing up your statements with preparation that I can only hope one day to be a shadow of what you've been these 14 years. So thank you. To Mayor Dickinson, I've admired you for a very long time, since my Board of Ed days, because that's really when I started like really coming around. But I always was like, wow, the mayor is so down-to-earth, this is so weird. And then, you know, we find out that the rest of the counselors are human too. And it was a great, it was a great experience. One of the main reasons I love Wallingford is because Wallingford is a reflection of you. It is really a playful place. It's a place where people can come and take time from the mundane, sometimes the sad things that can happen in life and be happy and take a breath. And we've talked about all of the open space that's in this town. And we have you to thank for that for the past 40 years, which regrettably is not older than me, so whatever. But I really, really heartfelt want to say thank you for everything you've done. Because without you, I mean, maybe everybody else should be thanking him too because without him, I probably wouldn't be here in the first place. So you do that. But I really do appreciate you. You know, you're like the town's dad and now we're getting a new stepdad and we don't really know what he's going to be like, so. But I hope to see you around and I hope that you're still going to be involved with us. And I hope that I'll still see you at all of our meetings. And not these meetings necessarily, take some time. But, you know, at our RTC meetings or that we'll see you around at all of the many events that the town has largely due to your influence. So thank you for so many wonderful years of service and for building this amazing, amazing, beautiful town that you have over the past 40.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Counselors Adrian Latt has already been said and Mr. Sullivan had some really nice things to say. One of them was that you were always the voice of reason. And I just want to say, I think that was only sometimes because we didn't always agree. But what I, I always appreciated was the amount of heart that you put into the town, your family, your friends and everyone, excuse me, everyone up here. And I know that you might not be sitting behind the mic for at least two years, but that it doesn't change that you, you are always serving. And if it's not here or out in the community, it's at home and online. And the example that you provide, your kids and, and everybody else's kids, the thoughtfulness that you put behind everything, I think, is, is valiant. And it's, it's difficult to ever blame you or point fingers for, for just wearing your heart on your sleeve and being passionate. So thank you. The mayor, almost my entire life, not more than my life like some other people. But I, I hope that in the last 40-plus years, that people got the opportunities that I had, the, the fun times that we had that maybe weren't in these chambers. Because I know, you know, in, in this building, it's a lot of discussion about needs versus wants and difficult decisions. But outside these chambers, there's, there was a lot of fun, loving and kind conversations and times to be had. You know, from trains with my kids on the floor to jumping and bounce houses. And I still don't know how our technology meetings became more about the Civil War, but I guess that's, I guess they became more interesting that way. It's, it's going to be hard to, to not see you here. But I hope that the next things that we find in the future, that we find you there as well. And the other person not going to be sitting up here, Chairman Servoni. I'm very, very excited about the future and the leadership and the potential and the offerings that you'll bring to the next evolution of Wallingford. Your heart, your integrity and your intelligence, you're way more patient than, than I think you even have to be sometimes. And that is definitely something to, to admire. And one of the things I do admire and I look forward to is how that you will and do look to tomorrow while still honoring the, the lessons of the past. And that, I think, is what Wallingford needs right now in this major time of change. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want, I want to begin by starting with my colleague to my left, Counselor Zandry. I have known Jason since about 2003, for about 20 years now. And he has been a friend throughout that time. As was mentioned, you were, you were elected in 2009, right?
Uh, I think 11.
11, okay.
I ran in '07.
And you've devoted your life to the governance of this town since then. Jason has been a great counselor to Wallingford. He might have taken on an occasional battle or two that I don't think I would have taken on, but there is absolutely something that I admire about that. There's no question that Jason stands up for what he believes in. And I know he believes in Wallingford greatly and has worked very hard to see our town succeed. I can personally say that I have enjoyed my first two years on this council, sitting beside you. You have shared your knowledge and helped me learn our processes and procedures. You've given me some great advice along the way. I truly appreciate that and thank you. But more importantly, thank you for your service to Wallingford. And Mr. Mayor, I, I too have only known one mayor in my lifetime and that has been you. And some of my fondest memories growing up in this town have you as a significant presence within them. Whether it was a school concert or their graduation at Moses Y, you were there. You were there when my aunt got my brother and me very involved with the adopted road program at the ages of 12 and eight years old. At my project graduation, you were there. You were there for so many things, not just for the younger generations, but for all generations in town, all people in our town. And you were not just there physically at every event in Wallingford. You were there for Wallingford in every moment of every day for the last 40 years. There may have been some differences of opinions on positions and policies and I was tough on you at times, but I hope I was fair. Because one must look at the state of affairs of many other towns and cities in the state of Connecticut. And I think you would say we have been pretty lucky here in Wallingford. But it certainly wasn't just luck. It was a steady hand at the wheel and that hand was yours, Mayor Dickinson. You truly devoted your life to this town. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you have done. Mr. Chairman, you have big shoes to fill and I hope you fill them because your success is the success of Wallingford and it's something we all want. Thank you.
No pressure. Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, I, I just want to thank you for your, your many years of service. You know, I think I was the counselor that Counselor Tata was talking about when you had that situation a few years ago and it was very scary. I remember when I saw on your Facebook page that you had gotten the petitions and, you know, ready, you know, to help you. And I called you. You had a very hoarse voice. You said, Greg, I'm in the hospital. And you explained what had happened. We were all very concerned for you. It's very difficult to try and get petition signatures without a candidate. We learned that at that time. We tried really, really hard. We never got there. I think, Jason, you and I came up here together, the fireworks that we've heard about tonight. I adopt everything that's been said tonight. Your dedication to this town should be commended and I do. Mayor, I think I'm the oldest one up here now, right? I graduated from high school in 1983 when you started here. You didn't sing at my graduation though. You and I have not always gotten along, but I've always known you to be guided by what you thought was in the best interest of the town. Many people have talked about your humor here tonight. A lot of people don't, well, I guess the public does see your humor more than with other elected officials and, and I appreciate that. That folksiness of Mayor Dickinson tied to the town of Wallingford is something that just, it's, it's irreplaceable. And, you know, I too thank you for your, your many, many years of service. And, you know, somebody said earlier, I'm not going to see you again. I'm hoping that you're out there and that you're from time to time going to the microphone and telling us that we got it wrong. I'll listen, I'll have the discussion. I may not agree, but that's the exchange. It's part of being in, part of this country, part of this town, part of this state. It's being able to disagree and to do it respectfully. And I appreciate that. So thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Dickinson, before you speak, may I? It might be my last time. So, you know, we talk about where we were in our own lives in relation to when your political career started. So no, I, I was alive. Your first election to mayor was in the fall of '83, which was when I started high school. And I moved here to town about 11 years later. And so as a Wallingford resident, you are the only mayor I've known. And I assure you that in your political career and my opportunity to work with you, I found you to be an inspiration. I found your dedication to principle, to be noteworthy and admirable. I'm certainly grateful for your service to this town. It, it certainly goes well beyond what many of us in recent memory have seen from others. And I certainly have enjoyed our friendship and I will count on it continuing in the coming years. So I am incredibly grateful for who you are to this town and who you will continue to be. So thank you. Your turn.
Just briefly, thank you all for your very kind comments. I, I will say that whatever we enjoy about Wallingford, and there are many things, whether it's improvements in the downtown, the streetscapes, the open space, the quality of services, the list can go on and on, the events that people enjoy. It's not just the mayor's office that provides those. I mean, it's a, it's a cooperative group effort between departments, council, mayor and the general public. We have wonderful volunteers who see, who see that so many of these things occur, public celebrations being a prime example. So I appreciate your appreciation of my role in that, but it's only one role out of many people all coming together and doing things in a very constructive and, and friendly way. And there's no reason why that can't continue. I salute all of you taking on the task for another two years. And certainly we, we will continue to, the town will continue to require and expect good judgments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Zandry, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So I, I, I just wanted to kind of chime in real quick too. I'll, I'll start with Mayor Dickinson. I, I think I would like to kind of outline the fact that, to me, bigger than the 40 years that you've been here is that you've outlasted two sets of Zandries. And I'm actually kind of surprised that my father wasn't here tonight just to make sure that you lock the door when you leave. But it's, it's a, you know, and I, and I say that being, being a little funny, but it, at the same time, I, I think that that's an important thing to look at. The longevity, the ability to continue to strive for the things that you feel are important. And I, and I, and I've disagreed with Mayor Dickinson as, probably more times than I've agreed with him. But the, but the fact of the matter was, we were both looking. the fact of the matter was, we were both looking for things that would make Wallingford better in different ways. And I think that's the important thing. So, I appreciate the difference of viewpoint that you've always brought along, Mr. Mayor, and the ability to leave it here in chambers. Because anytime I ever saw you anywhere else, it was never those discussions, it was always whatever was going on at the time. So, I really appreciate that the political piece of it stayed in the political building. So that was always, that was always something that I really appreciated. For myself, again, it's been an honor to serve the town. I feel like what I leave behind is in good hands from the incumbents that are already here and our two new councilor-elect that are going to be sitting up here very, very soon. The only thing I would ask of all of you, and mayor-elect as well, is to continue the same tentative dance that we've been doing up here probably the last six years. I would say the last six years, it's been the strongest. There's a big, broad difference of opinion on how to get the things done up here, and I think that we've found a very precarious way to keep things moving forward. It's been a delicate compromise, but I think we've seen it through, and I would like to, I'd love to see it shore up and be stronger, but I would like to at least see it keep happening. And I think it's entirely permissible with the new councilor-elect and with the incumbents that are coming back. So, again, I appreciate all of your efforts up here, and I'm going to be looking forward to more good things as we move forward. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, for the last time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, you can stay. Good night.